I would like to call the Monday, February 26th, 2024 Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the Constitution of our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Morton?
Here.
Commissioner Howe?
Here.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson? Commissioner Hennig?
Here.
Commissioner Graham? Chairperson Rohr?
President. Thank you and welcome everyone this evening and those watching from home. Tonight's agenda consists of Item 1A, the minutes from Monday, February 12th to 1/24 Planning Commission Meeting. Items 2, 3, and 4, rezoning, general development plan and preliminary plat for Houdal Meadows. Item 5, other business. Item 6, adjournment. At this time, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda for the approval of the February 12th, 2024 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I will open the puppy carrying for agenda. Item 2, 3, and 4, rezoning, RZ 10-23-8939, and general development plan, GDP 10-23-8940, and preliminary plat, PP-10-23-8941 for Houdal Meadows. I will ask exhibits from our intern city attorney, John Mullane.
Staff admits exhibits 1 through 12 under item 2 on the agenda, and staff admits exhibits 1 through 12 under item 3 that showed on the agenda.
All those who wish to speak, please stand to be sworn in as a group. And just a reminder, if you, if someone still wants to speak and they were not sworn in, they need to fill out a form and return it to the recording secretary. At this time, I will ask our staff presentation, Adia Bright.
I was just gonna say, since we, if there's anybody that has not filled out a speaker form, I would like to, they're located in the lobby, just to the, on the left, as you walk out the door, and if you fill that out, you can bring it in and hand it to me, and I'll make sure to get it to the, our secretary. Thank you.
Adia Bright, 903 West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn in. Before you this evening, I request for a rezoning, general development plan and preliminary plat for Houdal Meadows, a proposed single-family development at the southwest corner of East Wyatt Road and South Litchford Road. The current property includes two parcels on approximately 133.43 acres and is zoned county agriculture. The first request is to rezone the subject property from county agriculture to large-lot single-family. The 2014 Conference of Plan included the subject property as neighborhood, which is defined as areas for residential living arranged in a connected pattern of streets and blocks to provide access to civic and neighborhood amenities. The S2 area plan classifies the subject property as low-density residential, mixed-density residential, and natural areas. Both the Conference of Plan and the area plan identify that there should be one to five dwelling units per acre on the subject property. The intent of the SF12 zoning district is to accommodate low-density residential development on lots that are much larger than found within the city's regular sta- single-family subdivisions. The second request is for a general development plan covering the entire 133.43-acre property. The proposed development includes 231 single-family lots and 12 open space tracts. The property is proposed to develop in eight phases, beginning at the north adjacent to East Wyatt Road and working south through the site. The applicant is proposing two access points to the development, one off East Wyatt Road and one off South Litchford Road. All internal streets will be public, and there are two proposed future connections to the west, which will connect to South Shroud Road when the property to the west develops. The developer will be required to construct full-width roadway improvements for 700 feet of East Wyatt Road starting on the west side and moving east. The developer will also be required to construct half roadway improvements along the remaining portions of Wyatt and Litchford, along with an eight-foot-wide multi-use path on both frontages. The proposed land use on the property is detached housing, and the proposed density is approximately 1.73 units per acre, which is on the low end of the recommendation per the S2 area plan. The proposed building type follows the detached house, large-lot building type standards with a few modifications being requested. The applicant is requesting to decrease the minimum frontage width to a minimum of 81.15 feet on 40 lots, which staff supports due to the curvature of the proposed streets. The applicant is also requesting to exceed the maximum frontage width on four lots because of their location on a corner or a cul-de-sac. Lastly, the applicant is requesting to exceed the maximum lot size for one lot to allow for 1.41 acres because of the depth of the lot created by the adjacent existing parcel. Staff is supportive of all requests because staff believes the applicant is still meeting the intent of the code and the proposed zoning district by providing lots that are much larger than found within the city's standard single-family subdivisions, as the average lot size is 0.38 acres. The applicant is required to provide two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit, which the applicant will meet and exceed with two-car garages proposed. The plan also shows a five-foot-wide ADA-compliant sidewalk along one side of the street, which is required per the UDC. The SF12 zoning district requires that a minimum of 10% of the site be open space, and the applicant is proposing that 20% of the site will remain as open space. The plan shows a trail and a clubhouse with a pool for the amenities. Also, parts of the site will remain natural due to existing topography in the stream and associated stream buffer. The applicant has provided a conceptual landscape plan, which will be reviewed in greater detail with the Admin's Site Plan Design Review that will be required prior to final plating of each phase. Conceptual elevations have been provided and includes a mix of one-story and two-story houses. The materials include masonry, vinyl siding, and decorative elements. The clubhouse must be complimentary to the houses and will be reviewed administratively with a building permit. Since there is no adjacent established minimum livable floor area, the UDC states the planning commission shall designate one. The applicant is requesting a minimum livable floor area of 1,800 square feet, and the minimum must be noted on each final plat. The final request is for approval of a preliminary plat. The preliminary plat includes 231 lots and 12 tracts. Staff reviewed the rezoning request under the nine review criteria included in the staff report and finds that the request is in accordance with the Conference of Plan. The proposed zoning and development of the site with large-lot, single-family zoning is appropriate due to the surrounding properties also being developed as low-density residential. Approval of the application would set a precedent in the area for density design and street networks while allowing the property to develop in compliance with the Conference of Plan. Staff feels that rezoning to large-lot, single-family would allow for an appropriate transition from whatever will develop to the west, as that will likely be more dense. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning. Staff reviewed the general development plan under the review criteria included in the staff report and feels that the development is compatible with the area and will not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area, based on both the sensitive design of the site and houses, as well as the additional investment that is likely to have a positive impact. Staff believes the requested modifications have been offset by enhancements, including amenities for residents, green spaces throughout the development, sidewalks to connect pedestrians to all parts of the development, and sound urban design practices. Based on this review criteria, staff recommends approval of the general development plan with one staff condition. Staff also recommends approval of the preliminary plat with seven conditions, and I am here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak at this point?
Good evening. My name is-
Do I get your name and address?
My name is Jeremy Powell. I am with Powell CWM. Our address, office address is 3200 South State Route 291, Independence, Missouri. I'm here on behalf of JW Larkin Properties tonight. Unfortunately, he had to leave the state on emergency, so I here represent him. Do you may know Mr. Larkin for Houdal Ridge and Houdal Meadows, or acres, sorry, that he is currently building on Adams Dairy? These houses will be very similar in type, and the development will be overall appearance of houses of that nature, which currently they are selling for 650 to 800,000, so we are coming in looking to build nice, beautiful homes, high-end homes, and not your slab on grades that we have a lot going in Blue Springs. As a resident of Blue Springs, I see a lot of the 40-foot-wide lots, that's about all you have to choose from nowadays, and that, that will probably, that fade will probably, or fad will probably phase out in years. This is something that will stick around for a while with the large estate lots.
I mean-
Welcome to stand for any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would want, that are in, would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this project? Okay, would you mind coming up then? We'll need your name and address.
Well, my name-
And I give, I just want to remind you, I think you're gonna be on three minutes.
I'm sorry.
You'll be on a timer for three minutes.
Okay.
So, and then one other thing, when the next person comes up, all we wanna do is don't try to repeat the same stuff that the person that just left the podium. That way you'll probably be able to get more stuff seen.
Alright, you ready? Alright, my name's David Canoust. I live on 8312 South Litchford Road, which I'm the one that's being impacted the most here. I live in the lot that's your surrounding. If you notice the neighborhood, I don't know, an estate lot is anything over two, is acre and above, okay? It's not under an acre. It's an acre and above, and none of these fit that criteria but two or three lots, okay? This is way different than the neighborhood that we live in. We live in a neighborhood where everything is two, three, five, 10-acre lots. This is not even close to what we live in. So this is just, it just destroys the neighborhood. Why people move out here to live was to have space, to have land, and this defeats the purpose of what we have now as a neighborhood. As of right now, the, the roads are in terrible condition, just in, in Wyatt Road and, and that, from the building that we've done already for, up there by the Colonial Nursery, and I just don't see where this is gonna get better. You're adding at least 400 cars to this, and you're gonna try and get them out on an exit, onto a two-lane road. It just, it does not seem like it makes good sense. And if you're the builder and you haven't walked this lot, I don't know how you're gonna get the road to the other side when you're blocked off on the Shroud Road from somebody that already owns that land, to get there when you have a rock cliff that you have to go through where they have now the lift station. I would don't, I don't see that this works for our area, and also I wanna know what the EPA thinks about you removing 12 deer that's a herd there and the 42 turkey that live there. We have a lot of wildlife there that comes into play, and this is not taken into consideration. You're not taking consideration the amount of water runoff. You know, they say, oh yeah, the numbers work. You can make those numbers work however you want, but you got 130 acres, and all of a sudden now drains into that creek instead of being absorbed when it rains. So now it all runs down, you're gonna have to have, you'll take your storm sewers right to that creek, and already, if we get a heavy rain, that starts to flood downstream. I don't think we've taken that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pardon?
Thank you.
My name is Ajaz Ali. Time start?
Yeah, but name and address.
Yeah, my name's Ajaz Ali. Address is 29910 East Harris Fox Road. I probably are benefit from this development if I ever decide to sell my land. I have about 100 acres that are about two, three parcels down from there. But I moved in this neighborhood because I wanted to get away from the city and not have the city next door to me. We are not against development. Anything of my neighbors, myself, we're not against development. It's gonna happen sooner or later. It's not really appropriate to put 200 houses when you could barely get two cars across from each other. If you're driving on Litchford, if you're driving on Wyatt, if you're driving on those streets, you could barely get two cars, decent-sized cars, and then you have to stop. One car would have to stop and the other would have passed. So add another, let's say, you know, on a low note, 200 cars. There's 200-some houses going in. I'm assuming each house is gonna have one car. To add another 200 cars, Litchford is not gonna handle this. Wyatt is not gonna handle this. So where are these people supposed to go? And, you know, I don't, Houdal Development, the houses look very nice. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that they're crap house, this or anything of the sort. They're very nicely done, but there's the main street that has a wide enough access to it. You know, Adams Dairy is, is wide enough so they can accommodate those types of cars. These streets are side streets and barely have straights. When they came out and actually paved our street, the next day, the streets started falling apart. You know, where, where are you really gonna take these people when they have the problem? And when you drive and these, when they snowed, there was a one-lane road, not two lanes, one lane, and you had to watch when you go over that hill, because there could have been somebody coming across. So if the city is willing to put dollars and cents in front of anybody's safety, I don't think it's a good idea. I don't wanna be the one to have my child or my family or one of my neighbors get in a car accident because there's not enough access. So unless the city's gonna come in and redo all these roads, I don't think this is really even a conversation that we should be having, because the infrastructure's not there. How are you gonna put a, you know, horse in front of the carriage instead of behind it? How do you expect these cars to get where they need to go? And, and are, is the city gonna take a lot responsibility for not having the infrastructure and putting these people in? Because we're dealing with that on the Colonial Nursery development. Those roads are not roads. They're just potholes after one after another. And if you guys have driven down Litchford, you know, I got some damage on my car that's been happening from that road. How do you expect another 200 cars or more to go down that street? And, you know, again, if the infrastructure was there, I think myself and my neighbors would be more accommodating to hear this out, but it's not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to come up and speak?
My name is Martin Underwood. I live at 29110 East Wyatt Road, Green Valley, 64029. By the way, all those addresses are 6429. I live right on the corner of Litchford and Wyatt. This is insane. 230 homes. It's gonna be in my backyard, in my front yard. There's gonna be, I wanna know what the traffic study was. Tell me what the traffic study was, because the last time at Houdal's was here, it was 1,400 cars going down Litchford and Wyatt Road. What is the traffic study? Can you tell me? Nobody knows what the traffic study is? Mike, you know what the traffic study is?
Uh, this moment is just for you to make comments, and we're jotting down-
Well, that's a comment. I need to know.
I understand, but it's-
I mean, these people need to know.
It's not for asking questions of staff or, or the planning commissioners or the applicant. We'll do that at the end.
So when we, excuse me, when we get through the questions, I mean, I'm taking some notes, and I'm sure other people, and then we will either get the developer back up-
I want you to think about how many concrete trucks are gonna build 230 homes? About 600? How many blacktop trucks you think are gonna go down Wyatt Road? About 75? Not only about that, the construction equipment, loaders, earth movers, what the total of these people going in and out of the, the area? It's nuts. If you wanna put 35 homes on 100 or 230 acres, I'm sorry, 130 acres, three-acre lots, large homes, 2,400 square foot on the main level, these are little cracker boxes here. I get disappointed when I watch the planning commission meetings, and you let the developers of these duplexes control the traffic and parking on their complex, like that recent Redwood or whatever it was here the other day, and they turned it down on the second phase, but the builder or developer said, oh, we're, we're gonna control the traffic along the street. I want you to go next to Eagle Ridge and look at those duplexes and see how many cars are, are lined up. The traffic going up and down here, I know that there's a proposal about fixing Wyatt Road where you got a drainage dip out in the middle of the road and around about. The traffic going up and down here, the last one was done for Proverbs. The traffic engineer said it would be a number of about 1,400 cars visits in and out from Seven Highway to Colburn. It upsets all of us. We moved out in the country to be in the country. We don't want duplexes. We don't want stacked-up houses, slab homes. That's not why we moved out here. It really upsets everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tanya Parker. I live at 9008 South Litchford Road. So some people have spoke already on the water reach, the water runoff, so I don't really wanna go over that anymore, but I did submit some photos and video to kinda demonstrate the effects that has on Litchford Road. I don't know if they can play those or not, but while somebody's looking for that or seeing if they've, they have it in their email, I'm gonna go ahead and go over some of the other things that weren't addressed. I, I understand that agricultural land is the easiest to develop, because there's the fewest number of, of people in opposition, because nobody's out there, but that, the repercussions of this extend beyond 175 feet. And without having the proper infrastructure, not even, not even just the, the roadways and the, and the sewers and the drainage, but no parks. These are landlocked properties that don't have any way to actually build out roads beyond, beyond the access of, of Litchford and Wyatt. You can go to Cook Road and, and, and drive, you know, that way, which is gonna be inside roads and rural, rural properties. I'm in favor of growth, as long as it doesn't burden the adjacent properties, but one other concern I do have is that even though I'm not a Blue Springs resident, this property and my property, even though it's Green Valley, are part of the Lee Summit School District, specifically Lee Summit North, Campbell, and Mason Elementary. All of those schools are at capacity even after lots of additions and, and construction over the years. Specifically, Lee Summit North has a concern for the 1,200 properties or units that are going in at the development on 470 and Colburn, North Colburn Road. That property, can't remember the name of it right now, but that, that is already Discovery Park. That's what's gonna already burden North Camp, North, Northly Summit, and then these homes also will be in the Northly Summit District. So those are just the main concerns I have. It just seems like each, each of our communities, Green Valley, Lee Summit, and Blue Springs, all are great communities, and they all are growing exponentially, but they're all working in bubbles, but they intertwine in so many areas, and I think that they need to be developed in the way that they intertwine. Thank you so much for allowing us all to speak today. We appreciate you all, and we know that you also live in this community, and it makes a big difference to you as well. So thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you. Troy Lovett, my address is 28812 East Wyatt Road. I am directly across from the, I guess the beginning of the development is going to begin. My major concern, one is, of what everyone's concerned here is, is basically the ingress and ingress. We have one road. We, we call it two roads. It's one road. It's, it's basically Wyatt turns into Litchford. There is no other ingress and ingress. We're talking, you're gonna have to have two cars per household. We're gonna be talking easily 1,000 cars coming through this road every day. And we had the situation with the last storm up over Wyatt where you have the agricultural land. We had one road, we had one lane for about three days, because they couldn't plow it fast enough. We're not gonna get 1,000 cars a day on one lane of road. It's just not gonna happen. We're gonna have construction. My house, I'm assuming they're gonna be taking some part of my land to make the road wider on Wyatt, because it's not gonna, there's no possible way that it's gonna continue on what we have. There's drainage right in front of my house. I don't know how that's gonna be addressed, and then the creek is right alongside of my property. It's about 10 feet from my outbuilding, about 100 feet from my garage. I don't, I have not heard too much about what we're gonna do with the drainage, is that we're gonna have this type of development and a creek that goes through. I feel, you know, there's several properties next to this creek, and I haven't heard too much about what's gonna happen with that type of, again, with the, with the, with the raining and the drainage with the, the new development. Some detention was brought to it. We moved out there because it is the country, is that we have, there's clearly dozen deer go through my yard every day. I've got turkeys, I've got raccoons, I have all sorts of wildlife. I, I think everybody out there has a bird feeder. It's unfortunate that we're gonna have development. We know there's gonna be development eventually, but these are multi-acre housing that we have, and there is, some of these houses, you're talking about quarter of an acre. I don't think that's appropriate. I think the acreage needs to be larger, and it should basically coordinate with existing properties that are out there. We don't need to build kinda like a waterfield south in this area. I just don't think it belongs. Thank you.
My name's Jay Ryan. I live at 28909 East Major Road. Just a couple of concerns I have is, everyone's gonna need access to 470 or 70, because most people drive into the city to get to work, so roughly you're looking at eight miles to 470 from where this is at, and they're gonna have to go to Highway 7 to get there. That is not a safe way to get there, because there is just one stop sign. There's no stoplights. There's no traffic safety. So that's something really to think about, is safety for people who already live out there, people who are becoming kids. You're gonna have an increase in high school kids driving recklessly, so that'd be one thing to think about. I-70, 70 mile, or four miles north, so again, they're gonna have to run straight north to get there. And then parks, we want kids to be able to play at parks that are accessible, and your closest parks are 2.3 and three miles away, and that's not really walking distance for young kids. I have a four-year-old. He's not walking two miles to get to a park, so there's more traffic on the roads to get these kids safely to a park to play on. And I know they said there'd be amenities there, but kids still are gonna wanna play with other kids in the area and go to the parks that the city offers. And grocery stores, everyone's gotta go grocery shopping, and the closest grocery store is two and a half miles away, and just think about all that traffic that everyone's hit, but just the safety of the residents and how it fits in this area. I live on 10 acres. My neighbors live on five to 10 acres. It just doesn't fit, and that's what we're trying to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Warren Mole, eighty-six oh eight South Shroud Road. Um, I was one of the people that stood up early, and so you said later, you know, anybody that stood up after that needed to, needed to get a form filled out. If I still need to fill a form out, I will. But anyway, I'm gonna try to stay away from some of the things that other people said other than this, this is an assault on wildlife. It's terrible what's, what could happen here. But, uh, here, um, a few months ago, at the intersection of Wyatt and Shroud Road, Shroud is a continuation, of course, of Adams Dairy. I come to that intersection and there were some guys doing some survey work. And I said, uh, I stopped and got out of the car and I said, "What's going on here?" They said, "Well, we're doing a water study, maybe a drainage study." And I said, "Fine." I said, "What's it for?" And he says, "Well, I think it's for a, I think it's for a cul-de-sac." And I said, "Cul-de-sac? Do you, do you mean a roundabout?" He says, "Yeah, I think that's what it is. It's a roundabout." He wasn't real sure what was gonna happen here. But anyway, excuse me, um, I'll bring up one other thing besides the assault on wildlife and everything. If they do a cul-de-sac there, eventually, also a while ago, I heard, I got the impression that eventually, uh, an entrance would go off of Shroud Road into the back of this development. I think I heard that. Eventually that could happen. Okay? If that happens, and it probably will if you're gonna put a cul-de-sac in, you're gonna widen Shroud Road. If you widen Shroud Road, we're required to hook on to the sewer system. We spent a lot of money putting in septic when we built in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen. If that's what we have to do, then that's what we have to do. You know, it's on the deed, it's on the plans that we have to do that. Not looking forward to it, but it's just too much development too quick. I don't think it's necessary. It's not the type of houses that we need. We, well, the, these people, these people here, they, they bought, uh, out here for a reason. They, they, and we did too. And it's just, it's a shame that this would have to happen. I, I don't think it's necessary. It's, it's, uh, it's really remote still. It's, it's remote. It's too remote for this kind of a development yet. I'll leave it at that, but I think it's a mistake to do this.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Becky Dowell A. Holt, and I live in Willow Tree, four three zero nine Southeast Willow Tree Court. And, uh, I hope I can get through this. I'm so nervous, my voice is shaking. But anyway, uh, I do wanna thank you guys as well for letting us present. We moved to Willow Tree about four and a half years ago. Uh, Willow Tree is, is zoned as estate lots, as, as you know, and, uh, that means that every lot is at least an acre. And, um, I, I'm here to request that Houdal Meadows be at least minimally rezoned to an estate lot level. Um, that would be every, every acre, every home sitting on an acre. And our requirement in Willow Tree is a minimum of eighteen hundred square feet on the first floor. And I would like to also put that in, that that would be a requirement, um, in that area, and that there'd be absolutely no rental property allowed, all single family. Um, and I, I'm not going to go into all of the traffic concerns because everybody else has touched on that, but I will, I would like to talk about Cook Road. No one has mentioned Cook Road, which is also very narrow and winding. And it is currently being used by a lot of people, uh, that live farther out, uh, and they cut through on Cook Road, and they cut through then through Willow Tree. And I am here to tell you that some of these people are driving forty to sixty miles an hour. I am not kidding. We don't have any sidewalks, we have no curbs, and we have a lot of children and families out in that area, and it is dangerous now. It's dangerous now, and this neighborhood, because of no other options, will also use Cook Road. They'll figure it out. I would, if I lived there, and I would be cutting through, uh, Willow Tree as well. Adams Dairy is also very dangerous. People are out there speeding. I can't imagine adding more traffic and people pulling out from all these different directions. It's, it's just, the, the infrastructure, as has been mentioned, is just not there. Um, and I, you know, I'm so proud to live in Blue Springs, and I really respect, uh, Jay, uh, Justin Larkin. He does a good development, um, so I'm not opposed, I understand about that. But, you know, Blue Springs, one of, all the literature that I've read about it is that they have a commitment to people to do a diverse housing, diverse throughout the city, to meet everyone's needs. And I think here, if you're listening, we have a need for this estate lot or larger acreage. We all came out here to live in the country. And am I just about out? Oh, okay. Well, okay.
Pretty close.
I'll just summarize with saying that any house in Willow Tree almost sells before it goes on the market. People want that housing. They, they want it. So I thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Adam Criz, three zero four zero four East Litchford Road. I'm, uh, down by the creek, if you follow Litchford, down about a mile from this. Everybody pretty much has the same feelings on this and the same types of problems they have with it. Um, from, on Wyatt Road, from Cook to Ma- or from Wyatt to Major, on Cook Road, the average lot size is three point three four. And if you add in Harris Potts Wyatt Litchford, the average lot size is six point four three. That's off of Jackson County Parcel Viewer, um, and it's updated every year. Um, as far as amenities go, they talk about having a pool, sidewalks, all this. We have our amenities, we already, that we want. We have property to walk around on. If we wanna walk, we just go down the road. Uh, we don't have to worry about too much traffic. Everybody waves. It's just the neighborhood everybody wants to raise their kids in. And right now I have a kid, one on the way, and we feel comfortable walking down the road. And that's how you wanna raise your family in a city like this, and we're proud to live there. Yeah, and as far as the creek flooding, that's another major thing. And, I mean, that's really about it. Just, I think a better development could happen here that would fit better with our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jeff Widder. I live at eighty-two oh nine Cook Road, right on the corner of Cook and Wyatt. Uh, my major concerns are, as everyone else has, uh, spoke about, is the roads cannot handle this development. That creek that runs through there runs directly through my property. My neighbor Troy over here, he spoke about it earlier. Um, I'm, I have huge concerns about the runoff into that creek and the backup that could potentially happen. Uh, I also have concerns about, uh, the lot sizes, like everyone else has spoke about. Uh, and I have a concern about the entrance of the subdivision and, uh, two hundred and thirty homes, we all know that everybody has more than one car. It's gonna create way too much traffic for these roads. The roads aren't wide enough. And it looks, from what I'm seeing, is the entrance is gonna be directly, uh, across from my home and Troy's home. So we're gonna have, you know, multiple headlights going right in, into the, into the front of my house every day. Like everybody else has spoke of, this, this just isn't, um, the place for a development like this. Um, we all, I think, agree that, you know, if we could go to two or three acre sites, uh, it would fit better and you wouldn't get as much pushback here. But two hundred and thirty-some homes on, in this area, i- it's just not gonna fit. It's not gonna work. It's, it's, it's nuts, in my opinion. And I don't wanna see it right across the street from my house. I don't wanna look at the headlights shining in the front of my house from people coming and going there. I mean, it's, that's about all I got to say without repeating what everyone else has said, but-
Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Okay, so it looks like all for the speakers for tonight.
Do you want me to run through some of the notes that we took down and then have the developer and/or staff address some of those concerns that were brought up?
Yeah, I've got some questions, so go ahead.
Okay. I think the items related to traffic, road improvements and drainage would be best handled by, by the developer responding to those and the improvements that are going to be made with this project to, um, the roads, the road improvements, the drainage improvements. Um, uh, in terms of the school, um, the city does route all applications to all school districts within, or that the property is within those boundaries. We did not hear anything back from Lee Summit School District. And a lot of concern was brought up about the lot sizes and the house sizes. Um, again, as Ms. Bright stated, these are proposed to be, um, single-family large lot, which is, uh, at a minimum of twelve thousand-
Twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand square feet.
Twelve thousand square feet, up to one acre in size. And the minimum house size is proposed to be eighteen hundred square feet. So whether that's at the first level or if it's a two-story, it'd be eighteen hundred square feet, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I think it would also be helpful if the developer, uh, his, um, consultant discussed the phasing of the project and how it would work, how many homes would be, are in each phase, and how that is planned to, uh, be developed and over what time period. I think that would help explain, um, some of the timing of infrastructure improvements as well. So, those are all the, kinda the notes I had, um, and what I believe the city can answer some of that. If the developer's unable to, we can speak to some of that as well, so.
The developer like to come up and go over some of those before you start asking the questions?
Okay, so, we have a issue of access to this property, being that we only have two access points. So per fire code, fire department, we only allowed ninety homes until we get a, a third access point. So until Chapman's develop or, uh, Proverbs develops or Mr. Larkin purchases one of those parcels, he's going to be limited to ninety homes. That'll be three phases, and that'll be at least five to seven years before those three phases are built out. So we, we got ourselves where he's gonna be setting on property until he can find additional access points. And at that point, you know, if it's on Shroud, then Shroud will have to have traffic study. Shroud will have to be improved, just like we're doing along Wyatt and Wichita, uh, Wyatt and Litchford. We are currently doing, I believe, seven hundred foot of full width improvements on Wyatt because it doesn't meet APWA site distance. And then the other portions of it, we're doing half-width improvements to bring it to city standards. So from the center, center line out, we're gonna bring it to the city, uh, street width with curb and gutter and storm, and storm inlets. Regarding the wildlife, I, that's, I don't know, I don't know how to address that one. I mean, I, I live in the pines. I have deer and raccoons still in my backyard. I, I, I don't know what to say about that one. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
I have a couple.
Yes.
Could you explain, what, what have you done about the water runoff? And, you know, s- couple of them have spoke about creek flooding and stuff like that. So has there been a, a study on the water runoff?
Yeah, preliminary study has been done. Uh, at the request of staff, we went ahead and did more work than what we typically would do to get to the entitlements. Um, and we also do have a hundred and fifty-foot stream buffer on each side that, that's, uh, can't be disturbed, can't build into it. Um, that's what'll give us some green na- native vegetation to help with the detention. We also have multiple stormwater detention ponds, uh, throughout the development that when we do go do construction documents, we'll, a full storm study will have to be provided to staff, Public Works Department for their review, and they'll have to meet their, uh, standards.
So the study you've done now, it does not include all phases?
It does, yes.
Well, it does include all phases?
It does.
So that mean, okay.
And that has been reviewed by Public Works, I believe.
Okay. And what about the traffic study? Since you got three phases here and that's all we've proved so far about the roads?
Yep. Uh, independent traffic study was performed, um, and I know everyone's going to disagree with it, but, um, currently at Adams and Wyatt, that, that is a Class B, uh, intersection, which is a, um, less than fifteen-second stacking. So to make your turn or go through, you're talking fifteen seconds. When this entire development is built out, uh, it will become a Class C, which is be, uh, less than twenty-five seconds. Uh, Cook and Wyatt is a A, and there is no impact on that one at this, based on this study.
So based off that traffic study, the infrastructure, the infrastructure, um, long-term after all three phra- phases is gonna be able to handle all that stuff?
Yes, correct.
Can I ask the city a question on that? So based off the traffic study and all the infrastructure, everything we heard here tonight about all the traffic, and there's been quite a few comments, can, does, does the city agree that that traffic will flow through there as it should without endangering people and safety and everything else?
Yes, the, the study's been reviewed by the city, and we are in agreement to admit, uh, all the parameters that are expected to be submitted through our construction and specification manual.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, one question if I could, Chair? Um, I know you've stated, I think city stated, single-family lot, large lot sizes. Will there be duplexes or slab homes here at all?
No.
Thank you, sir.
I guess my question is for staff and the applicant. Mike, you said just to defer to solely the applicant when talking about road width and the drop-off amongst the road. Is that just something the city never gets involved? And then to trail on that after he answers, would you please reiterate what your plan is for the width of the road, um, and any improvements that you plan on making?
I'm not sure I understand the first part, but, uh, when a development like this comes in, we look at the number of lots, public works, engineering examines it, we review the traffic study, and we look at our city code requirements that typically require half-road improvements adjacent to the parcel being developed. If there are some areas that according to that traffic study determine that a full road improvement is necessary based upon, uh, site visibility or curbs in the roadway, um, or just, um, need, then, then we would ask the developer to do that as well. In this instance, and the developer can, and, um, would, uh, reiterate the same thing, is there are half-road improvements for the length of the project on Litchford and ha- half-road improvements for the majority of Wyatt Road, except there is a small portion that I believe does have full road improvement um, because of the, um, I don't know what it's called, I'm not an engineer, but basically the, the dips in the road, the, the, whatever it's called, not an engineer again, but, um, and so in reading the traffic study and applying those conclusions with our code requirements, is how we determine what ro- road improvements get made throughout development.
Would you explain half-road improvements, please?
Uh, curb gutter and sidewalk-
Okay.
Uh, on that side of the street.
Okay. Um, can you elaborate at all about the roads and all of the major concerns that the residents have? And then also, a question I have is the square footage was stated at a minimum of eighteen hundred per home. Is that, uh, any requirement for a certain specific amount of square foot for the main floor versus the entire above-grade?
Well, I guess first the, the road question, um, and I don't have it off to my head. What is the, uh, width requirement?
Jim, do you know the width requirement for the, the two roads, as I believe they're collectors?
Yeah, thirty-two feet, back curb, back curb.
So we're, we're responsible for half of that, the thirty-two feet. And then the, and the portions where it doesn't meet the current site distance requirements, we're responsible for both sides. So it'll be thirty-two foot, and then the other portion will be, uh, half of the thirty-two. Uh, regarding the, the house sizes, I believe that, that is equivalent to Hoot Al, uh, Ridge, and I believe that's the main level, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. I'm sorry about that.
That concerns me, um...
I don't think there's any in Ridge that's any less than that on the main level. So that doesn't count if you go a story and a half or two stories.
Pardon me?
That doesn't count. Eighteen hundred doesn't count on a story and a half or two-story.
So what you're saying is it would be eighteen hundred, both levels, not just on the main floor?
No, that, on the main.
Eighteen hundred on the main of every lot? And you're certain or not certain?
Not certain.
Okay.
I can answer that for you. When we do the minimum livable floor area, that is the amount of area finished inside the home that is livable space. So if there's an unfinished basement, we don't count that.
Correct.
So they have to meet that minimum. We don't designate whether it's on the first story, second story. They put a minimum. Typically, we see people build up to a thousand to twelve hundred square feet over the minimum. It's just there so that nothing can be smaller than that.
And Chris, I just got the text from Mr. Larkin. It is eighteen hundred on the main level.
Okay.
So, just to clarify.
I'm, I'm gonna bounce back to the streets again, so, and this could be a city question or because of you. Okay, so you guys are repairing, or you're responsible for one half of the street to upgrade. Who is going to upgrade the other half?
The city code reads that the developer's responsible for half-width improvements for his tire frontage or half, or full width for half of his frontage. So at this point, he's only required to do, uh, the half and...
I understand that part.
The future developers, they say the, uh, the remaining land bank property on the other side of the street would probably be responsible for, uh, doing it.
So there's a very good chance that you can go through phase one, two, and three, and most of these, or some of the streets that you're only doing half, the other half will never be upgraded?
That could be a possibility.
Okay.
Chair, I have a question. When you say that could be a possibility, you're, you're assuming, you're taking care of the entire side where you're building. You're assuming, right, that another builder would come in on the other side of the road and finish out that side of the road?
They would be resp- required to.
They would be responsible for that half.
And required to.
Yes, okay.
And, and Chair, I can address some of the concerns that have been brought up on Wyatt Road from Seven Highway to Adams Dairy Parkway. The city is in the process of doing that as a capital improvement project. Um, that I believe the latest timeline is to have that, um, cons- uh, expected to span two construction seasons over this, this summer and finish after the construction season of twenty twenty-five, and the city is, um, widening that section of Wyatt Road, so.
Um, okay, but then the other streets that are still out there, they may not be upgraded on the side that the developer's not doing at this time. So there will be some streets that will not be upgraded?
That's, that's correct. There will, there will be some sections of Wyatt Road from the western boundary of this project to Adams Dairy Parkway that would not be widened at this time. Um, and then there will be sections on Litchford Road where only the west half will be developed. And if something comes in, um, on the other side of the road to be developed, um, with a neighborhood or something else, then they would be responsible for building their half of that road to com- make the full width improvements.
And this could be a city question, or it could be a developer question again. Um, what is the, um, what, 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 what are the streets? What kind of shape are they in right now, before you go in there and do?
Well, after winter, uh, it's all streets. Uh, they're pretty rough.
Okay, so theoretically, the other half that you will not be developing, or if a developer doesn't come in, it's, it's gonna be pretty rough for two, three years down the road, if not longer.
I would say C would be maintenance of that half that's existing.
If the budget allows.
Fixing potholes like they do every spring.
Okay.
I have a question. And I think we're all thinking my neighbor here all day.
Just a minute. Okay, I th- I think we're done, you know, so thank you very much. So Mike, Kenny?
Typically, we don't allow applicant, or the public to get back up and ask questions again. Um, they have three minutes to speak, and then that's the public testimony portion of the public hearing under the Planning Commission rules of procedure. If the chair would like to allow that, and I think could do so, but the standard procedure is to have staff presentation, applicant presentation, testimony in favor, testimony against, and then questions from the Planning Commission to either the staff or the applicant.
Okay, so I assume it's gonna be short?
Yes, it is.
And I'm, the only reason I'm doing this is because there's a lot of, um, conflict and misunderstanding, I think, so if you could make it short, and then we'll...
Yeah, I'll make it real simple. I'm gonna show you the streets that we're living on.
Well, I don't know if that's gonna, okay, that's fine.
So this is a one, one lane, what is that?
That's fine.
So I don't know how these cars are gonna get through. One lane.
Yeah, you should.
How do you guys expect all these cars to get through? One lane, so we're all moving this up.
Okay.
It's bad weather, that means that's what we're gonna deal with. Here and add more cars to it.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's a question that wants, can I just, one real quick, is that the entire development is developed on the opposing side. So what the testimony I heard is that that entire road down Wyatt and Litchford, there's no responsibility of the city. It's likely responsibility for us to build the road in front of our house. Um, it's not going to be developed. There is some, there are gonna be no future developments. It's already developed. So I don't, I wanna to address that, I mean, that needs to be addressed today, is that we're gonna deal with one half. We're gonna put in two hundred houses and have half a road, and then the other half is gonna be the city's responsibility. And the city has not done a really good job out there so far. We don't think too many people...
Okay, so I, okay, so I, I, I think that has been discussed on the half and what part is going to be redone, and probably there will be some, based off the development, there probably will be some areas that will not be, um, completed for some time. So at this time, I am going to close the comments of the public hearing. So is there any other further discussion from the staff?
I have one more question for staff about lot size. I see a lot of these are point three four acre. As a general rule of thumb, how many acres is the typical lot, um, of a subdivision of equal or slightly lesser caliber, and I know that's a very vague question. Ki- ki- how can you, can you comment at all?
Typically, if we do a regular SF seven subdivision, that's a minimum seventy-five hundred square foot. Most lots will be around nine to ten thousand. So most lots will only be about two thousand over the minimum.
Nine to ten thousand square feet per lot?
Yeah.
And...
And that's for an SF seven. This one being SF twelve is minimum twelve thousand square feet.
Nine to ten thousand square feet is what percentage of an acre, roughly?
Uh, roughly a fifth.
Okay, and these are, okay, a third. The smaller lots are a third, okay.
Any further discussion from the applicant? Any further discussion from the commissioners? I will close the public hearing. So at this time, I'll ask for motion for the rezoning.
Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve RZ one zero two three eight nine three nine Hoot Al Meadows.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Henning?
Aye.
Commissioner Roar?
No.
Commissioner Morton?
No.
Okay.
Carries?
Yes.
Motion carried. This item will be recommended and heard by the city council at the Monday, March fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting at six P M. Next, I'll ask a motion for the plan, development, concept.
No, no, that's, that would be for the general development plan, sorry. That must, it might be a typo.
Oh, okay, sorry.
The general development plan, sorry.
Chair, I move to approve General Development Plan GDP one zero two three eight nine four zero for Hoot Al Meadows.
Have a second?
One staff condition as well, sorry.
Okay. Roll call.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Henning?
Aye.
Commissioner Morton?
No.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairperson Roar?
No.
So motion carried with one staff condition. This item will be recommended and heard by the city council at the Monday, March fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting at six P M. Next, I'll ask for motion on the preliminary plat.
Chair?
No.
I, uh, move to approve preliminary plat PP one zero two three eight nine four one for Hoot Al Meadows with the seven staff conditions.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carried with seven staff conditions. Next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Does the staff have any, have any other business?
Uh, no, we do not. We, I would like to put on Planning Commissioners' calendars, um, a couple of items. Uh, one is we need to get a picture of the Planning Commission for the annual report. Um, so hopefully, we can have full attendance at the next meeting on March eleventh. And, uh, per, um, Chair Kradoff's, um, comments at one of the previous meetings, um, staff is looking into the possibility of doing a study session with the Planning Commission to go over some, um, items relative to the development code, development reprocesses, um, some other items like that. Um, one of these meetings coming up sometime in either March or April. Um, and if you, any of the Planning Commissioners had any topics that they would specifically like staff to cover during that time, um, we've had a couple of cutoffs and deadlines in our six-week review time schedule that, um, we did not receive any applications, and so uh, we do foresee the ability to have a, uh, a meeting where we can not have any development cases brought before you, but that we can have more of a, uh, a time to answer any questions or kind of present, uh, some updated training materials, development process concepts, things like that. Um, with the amount of turnover that we've had on the board, the last time we did one of those trainings was back in, excuse me, April of twenty nineteen. So it has been a number of years, and it's, um, an appropriate time to do one of those again, so. Just wanted to put that out there and, and offer, um, my email address, uh, for anybody to send, um, any topics that they would like to discuss, um, as part of that.
Thank you. Does the commissioners have any other business? Okay. If there's no other business, I would entertain a motion for German.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone.